So it's an ESRI research infrastructure. ESRI was a body set up by, it's the European Strategic Forum for Research Infrastructures, and it's a body with representatives from each country. It's not the Commission, it's just a body where every European country sends their representatives. This group, ESRI, decided what the key infrastructures were for Europe, and they identified biological information and the bioinformatics infrastructure for that information as one of the key challenges that faced Europe, not to say the world. And of course, Elixir is focused on Europe, but everything we do is part of the global context. So this is not, it is a European infrastructure in the sense that the funding, hopefully in the future, will come from Europe for this part, but it's always been intended to sit as part of the global infrastructure for this. And it's obviously, the purpose is to unite the people in Europe who have responsibility for biological information and biological tools, to manage and safeguard the data being generated and funded, the public data that's funded by the public research funding from the different member states. And the plan is that inevitably, because of the data challenge, it will be a large-scale initiative, and hopefully it will underpin the life sciences, not just in Europe but in the world going forward, not just for academic research but also for translation. And there is a website which you can go and look at, it is in the process of being upgraded actually, and the new website is either already up or it will be up fairly soon. So the purpose, the mission is to build a sustainable European infrastructure for biological information, supporting life science research and its translation to medicine, the environment, bioindustries and societies. So it's a very grand mission statement, but actually constructing something that can do this, that is sustainable, i.e. will carry on being funded, is not a trivial exercise. So why do we need this? So creating this infrastructure is far bigger task than any individual organisation or nation can take on alone. At the moment, EBI as a European institution has taken on quite a lot of that core infrastructure effort, but going forward, it clearly cannot continue to grow. It's really doubled, since I've joined EBI, it's doubled in size, and it can't just carry on growing. And the fact is, we are going to have huge amounts of data, and we have to share in that responsibility of looking after the data. And the other thing is that biology really has by far the largest research community in any of the sciences. So if we think about CERN, which we all know about, the LHC, and that has about 8,000 scientists who use those data. If we just look at EBI, we have more than a million users every year, oh, that's IP addresses, so we have even more users than that. So we clearly need to involve everyone in trying to find a solution to this challenge that we face. And so the plan is to build an infrastructure which is distributed, which takes advantage of all the recent advances in technology, the cloud and all of this sort of thing going forward, but it's fundamental infrastructure is that there will be a hub which will be based at EMBL-EBI, which is already European in its structure, but there will be nodes based in the individual member states that will provide various aspects of this infrastructure. And it's also important to note that we don't have just the hub and the nodes, and equally, and perhaps the vital part of this, are the connections between the nodes and the connections with the hub with all the nodes, so that we can effectively cross query, if the data are in multiple places, we can cross query and get back sensible answers. So this will take, I mean, this is a huge, you could call it an experiment, but it's a scientifically-led social experiment, but it has huge social and political overtones, because it means that people have to agree on standards, they have to agree on the way they exchange the data, they have to agree on the political who does what business in this game, because the idea is very much not to have each site being equivalent, rather that each site does something special and is, that forms part of the bigger jigsaw, if you like, that we need to try and build. So what's the reason? I mean, I think with you guys, some of these slides were made for MEPs and things like that, so you know the reason why it's so important that we handle these data properly. And we feel that this is the best solution that Europe can sort of come up with. There are many political reasons, and this session you will find is much more political and social and funding than scientific, because what I'd like to hope, and I think I probably can assume, that all of you would agree that access to the data is fundamental to everything that we do. So we take that as just being read, really, but politically there are important reasons. The sustainability is important, the sharing of control of the data, I think, is quite important. The data that we have, say at EBI, people send it to us from all over Europe and all over the world, in fact. It's not our data, we're just custodians of that data, and it's quite important that that custodianship isn't just held in one place, and it has to be a shared custodianship around Europe. We want to remove the duplication and the waste. We all know of, you know, many people who have set up the same databases or the same things to do exactly the same, same task. At one level, at the research level, that's great, and that should absolutely continue, but once we get to the point when we know what to do, those services, and this is about service infrastructure, we don't want 10 different service sites, we can manage probably with one. So it will allow us to put, to fund, we all know about these databases that have been developed and then get out of date, the student moves on or the PI retires, and you lose all of the information, and so we want to find a way to tackle that problem. The sharing of costs is of course a key point. The distribution of expertise is really quite critical, because it's very clear, as the personal genomes come online, the ability to handle huge amounts of data will be necessary in every country, not just a few specialised sites. And so spreading the expertise that comes with looking after some of these data and developing the infrastructure for them, I think, is critical for Europe. Improve data integration through close coordinated collaboration, this is something that we all know about, and we all as informaticians spend half of our lives trying to integrate data. We have to do this better, I believe, in a coordinated way, so that we all stop having to do it locally. We want a single voice in global data management, so we already have from EBI collaborations with the US and with Japan, we share the data nightly or weekly, and we want that to continue. But it's good to give, that we aren't speaking from EBI, that we're speaking, all of us are speaking on the same, you know, to the same hymn sheet and, you know, saying the same things really with one voice. I also believe quite strongly that the bioeconomy is one of the ways that Europe can get through this financial crisis, and so supporting that and helping the innovation that comes with that, I think, will be important. And of course, ultimately, the possibility of societal benefits can't, I think, be underestimated in terms of personal stratifying medicine and all of that aspect. So there are many political reasons why I think we need Elixir. And we've already, we want this distributed infrastructure across different member states, and we've had a call for suggestions, for node suggestions already, and we had 50 odd, 54 proposals from 23 different countries around Europe, so there is interest across Europe in being involved in this. Societal reasons, I've always already mentioned the personal genome era. My, I don't know exactly how it's going to work, but I would suspect that personal data will not leave member state countries, except under a very special situation. And so it's important that each country knows how to handle that data, and that individuals in that country are confident that their data isn't going to be flying around Europe in ways that they don't want. So what's happened so far in Elixir? There was a preparatory phase, essentially there was what was called the consultation phase, and then a documentation and negotiation phase. So the consultation phase really was meant to last from 2008 to 2009 to define the scope and the remit of Elixir, and then until the end of last year, we'd begin the documentation and developing things. That has, all the BMS, all the infrastructure projects have realised that actually the challenge isn't scientific, it's trying to get the different member states to work together in a coordinated way. And so all the BMS projects have been, shall I say, struggling with getting a process in place whereby we can create something like Elixir. Whoops, sorry. So in the consultation phase, just, we had a grant for four and a half million from the European Commission to do this. That started 2008, I guess. We had a big, 18 months of consultation, where we had stakeholder meetings from people all around Europe, we had many steering committee meetings, we did a survey of data providers, a survey of users, we had reports from many different work packages and a few small feasibility studies. And Andrew and I went on numerous visits to visit different countries to explain what Elixir was trying to achieve. The outcome of all that consultation was this distributed infrastructure structure that we've already proposed, and that was broadly agreed, I think, by the, by the steering committee and in consultation with many users across Europe. So then the question is, well, what are these different bits of this network going to do? And of course, I can speak on behalf of EBI, I guess, and EMBL, what we can contribute, but each individual node and each country has to decide and pay for what they are going to contribute. So it's quite difficult, it's like trying to, it's like having a chess game where many different pieces are involved, you don't even know how they're going to move, and you don't know what they want to do, and you have to leave it up to them to decide. So in this initial start-up phase, we're very much in that state where the different countries have to decide, one, if they want to have a node, two, are they willing to fund the node, three, what that node would do as part of the infrastructure, and it's infrastructure, not research, and four, how would it all be funded and who would be involved in it. There are major challenges for all the different countries to address. So on behalf of EMBL-EBI, what we see, that we could contribute to this would be hosting the management and administration, running a data centre that would be at the hub of this coordinated data centre, and I'll come on to that, providing coordinated access to data, helping develop standards that we've already done in many areas, but actually driving that forward, which takes somebody's time and energy to do that, and generally people, people at EBI are willing to invest in that, because in terms of our data resources, that's critical for us. Supporting other BMS infrastructures, and Andrew will speak about that, delivery, trying to understand how we can interact with industry, and of course, providing some user training, but also helping to coordinate the user training across Europe. So it's really, to my mind, EMBL-EBI in Elixir will be really the helpmate, the grease that will make all of this work together and will provide that, which is rather appropriate since it's a European institution to begin with. If we think about what, just for information, what EBI does at the moment and what its role in Elixir will be, at the moment, our main tasks are on the, left on, on that side, and you can see it, that our main tasks, which will remain the same, management of core databases, development of search and visualisation tools, providing access to EBI data, participation in some of these consortia, user training for our own resources, industry collaboration and support, that will all remain as is today. But in addition, we want to participate in Elixir and provide, as I said, some of these different tasks that will help Elixir to really emerge. In terms of the nodes, what are the requirements for the nodes? And I should say, because people often come up to me and say, can I be a node? And this is not my, it's not in my gift to say, oh yes, of course, you become a node. This is a decision that is made by the country and will be made by the Elixir Scientific Advisory Board once it's established, but it's not yet established. So in terms of requirements for nodes, we would obviously expect them to be scientifically excellent, and there needs to be, you know, they would be interested either in data or compute or tools infrastructure or providing support for other ESRI projects or training, there needs to be a clear contribution. This is an infrastructure, it's service, not research, and so one would expect, if you like, a service mentality, a high reliability, eagerness to cooperate. We all have colleagues with whom one would like to collaborate, but it doesn't sometimes work, because they aren't the sort of people who want to collaborate. And we have to develop this ethos of sharing in the task rather than competing with each other in some way. Some competition's good, but we have plenty of competition from everywhere else in the world, frankly, we don't need, we don't, we really, I think, need to come together if we can. Many of the nodes would already be coordinators of national activities in some way, but that's not a requirement, but it's quite likely that that will happen. And they would also be the national contact point for Elixir, which would make things easier, because if each country has one contact point, obviously from an administrative perspective, it's easier to deal with. And of course, the availability of funding is critical for this. It's a chicken and egg argument, or a catch 22 is a better description. You want to, you want to be a node, you know what you'd like to do, but you have to go to your funding bodies to see whether they are willing to give you money to become a node, because without that you can't do anything. And then you need to get agreement from the Elixir Scientific Board, when it's Scientific Advisory Board, that this fits in with the other things. So it is a complex process that we need to go for. And we made this call for suggestions for nodes in July last year, as I say, we had 54 node suggestions from 23 countries, and they covered all sorts of different aspects. So some were national coordination nodes, some were data nodes, compute nodes, biological domain nodes, linking with other BMS projects, tools infrastructure nodes and training centres. They were really a whole variety of different things, but we would expect, I mean, this is a broad classification of the sort of node that you would expect, but this is, this is what we would hope to see. One of the things I feel quite strongly is that actually it's cheap for the price. Europe has already paid for the science that generates these data, the publicly funded research. The cost of maintaining the central core data resources and providing access to that data is so small compared with the cost of generating the data in the first place, that to me it seems a no-brainer, but of course, this is not always an easy argument to make with the funding bodies, but that's really the situation. So that says the same thing. Essentially, if we don't provide the data, access to the data, then all the investment in generating it seems to me to be lost, and so it's a very good way to recoup one's investment in the science that you've already made. So where are we so far? So essentially, I think several countries have already had commitments, ah, and I've left Spain off again, well done Janet, that was, yeah, okay. This is, I apologise, this is an old slide. Several countries have had what I would call preliminary first tranche funding for Elixir in order for them to work out what they're going to do going forward. The UK has been rather unusual, and we're very happy, they have contributed 12 million euros, and I'll tell you how we've spent that so far. And Denmark, Sweden and Finland have already got some funding, as has Spain. And there are various activities going on in different countries around, around Europe. And there's also the challenge of running costs and also how the hub will be funded. The data, the funding that we've received so far from the UK government has been capital funding, and that has been used to fund a data centre in London, a tier three data centre that will give us 24/7 access, extremely high reliability, and it gives us all the very high network transfer, data transfer rates that we need. And so we now have a lease for five years on the space in these commercial data centres. There's actually two of them, they replicate their failover, active failover, so it gives us a very robust service going forward. We also are requesting, and we're requesting from the UK additional funding for the data centre to take us out to eight years, and also to buy compute to go in there. That we're also from the UK government requesting additional capital costs for a new technical hub that would be based on the Hinkston site, that would include space for the, for additional staff that we actually already have within EBI, so some of those staff would move into the new building, an industry translational suite and a training suite to cope with the demands of training that we have. So in terms of costs, I can give you a cost of what we estimate in an ideal world, the hub would cost to run. The total capital cost that we are currently in the process of negotiating with the UK government, not negotiating, that's the wrong word, begging, I think would be a better word, asking for funding for, from a large facilities capital fund, for 74 million for the data centre, which really is at the hub, the technical hub of all of this structure. The operating costs are really for staff who will provide those additional tasks that I've already described. Then, you know, member states will come up to me and say, well, how much will it cost for the node? And of course, that's like asking how long is a piece of string, it depends whether it's a little node, a big node, or what it is. So in the business case, there are descriptions of small node, medium node, large node, and obviously different countries have the right to decide what they want to start, and I think given the current economic climate, it is quite likely that countries will start off as small nodes and allow, you know, build up to larger nodes as we go forward. How will Elixir be governed? And this is quite important going forward, to try and understand how this would work. And this looks quite complicated, and, sorry, I do have a simpler side than this, but it's quite important. There will be a council which has representatives from the member states and EMBL, basically, that each of the member states will send two representatives, somebody from the ministry, a funding person and a scientific person. EMBL is there because obviously we're using a lot of our funding as well for this. There will be, that will be the council. There will be a scientific advisory board, and, sorry, the grant committee is gone, that's not, that, because we've no money, so we can't have a grant committee, an SAB that will advise the council. There'd then be a relatively small executive management, clearly with a secretariat, that would feed into actually running Elixir. And then obviously each of the nodes, including the EBI as the hub, would have representatives that would feed into a head of Elixir nodes committee, that would then discuss how this could operate together. So this looks horrendously complicated, I mean, it's complicated for me, and I've been living with this for the last three years. You know, it really is a complex thing to establish, and the closest thing I can think of is the efforts to set up EMBL way back in the, in the 60s, it's almost as bad as that, except of course, we do already have the vehicle of EMBL and the Commission there to help with this going forward. So how will it be funded? So the Elixir nodes, which are based in the member states, will be funded by their own national funding agencies. So again, there is no point coming to me and saying, I want a node, can I have some money? I have no money. It's really a case of individual nodes talking to their own funding bodies to see if they can work together with those funding bodies to create a node. The hub, obviously as EMBL, we don't have, we aren't in any one nation, and so we have to ask the Elixir consortium members to contribute to the cost of running the hub. The hope going forward, and it is only a hope at this stage, and we've been working hard in lobbying in Brussels, would be that together we can go and jointly apply for funding from the Framework Programme and other international programmes. And there is clearly a desire in Brussels for funding this sort of infrastructure. The question is what sort of an instrument they come up with and what the member states agree to, and we don't know that yet, but that would be, that would be emerging in Framework VIII, not, you know, we won't know about that for several, well, for a year or so. But I think the signs are good, the question is whether it will be agreed. So, hang on, I've said that, oh, why is it going? So we already have got one EU grant, and this is, I mean, it's brilliant in one way, in another way it's a bit frustrating. This is a grant which is called Biomed Bridges, because it's supposed to bring, build data bridges between the biological and the medical infrastructures. And of course, because it's data, Elixir is the information infrastructure, and so we are coordinating this. So we have money in order to support or to coordinate the other infrastructures for their data, but we don't yet have any money to actually run Elixir, which is a bit ironic. But nevertheless, we have that. This is a collaboration with all the BMS infrastructures, and in that way it's really good, because it means that all of these infrastructures which individually, so for example, Infrafrontier has coordinated all the mouse and phenotyping and mouse house infrastructures in Europe. By talking to Infrafrontier, we are effectively connecting with all that community that deals with mouse experiments, mouse, mouse houses and mouse phenotyping. And so that's a real, it is, the Commission speak about structuring Europe, creating this European research area. This actually is proof that it is working and that we can create an infrastructure based on, based on these interactions. So this grant will start in January next year. So the question is, where are we now in terms of Elixir? So we have a business case, you will see there is a stand outside, and in, on that stand there are various leaflets and literature that you can take away with you. We have a memorandum of understanding, the wording has been agreed by the, the We have a memorandum of understanding, the wording has been agreed by the, the EMBL Council and by the member states. We've got, in fact, the, this, the, the final wording was released about a fortnight ago. We have three signatures on that already. We need five signatures to go into action. That was what we said, we need five countries to agree, and then we can start building it. We already have three. We know that we've got another, probably six in the pipeline. And so this will start, and there is, and the first Elixir Board or interim board meeting is planned for the seventh of November, two thousand and eleven. And at that meeting, everybody who has signed the MOU will send two representatives, one scientific and one from the funding, from the ministry, from the funding agencies, and we will sit down and work out an international consortium agreement about how we are going to operate this and what is going to be achieved. And so in some ways, actually, we really are on the brink. We, we describe it as emerging. It's, it's, I almost feel it's like a, a flower in spring that, you know, it's, it's now got its, it's, the leaves are showing above the ground. We have real concrete, not concrete, we have real growth, real progress there. And I should say, this is four years after we started, so this has been a huge commitment from many people, some sitting in this room. So the idea is that we've been in the orange preparatory phase. No, I can, here, we, we've been in this phase. We're now going into the construction phase, which will probably last three or four years, when we work out how this will operate. And then from about two thousand and sixteen, we would see this as being as, as fully operational infrastructure with the ways of, you know, the way it operates and everything. And, and that's really quite, it's a long time. Certainly as a researcher, when I started this, I couldn't believe that this would take as long as this. But as soon as you begin to understand the complexities of interactions between different member states, you realise that it's inevitable that this takes time, and one has to be somewhat patient. So summer two eleven, we've got the MOU, it's effective once we've got five countries signed. That will happen September, no doubt. We've got the interim board meeting in autumn this year. We will have some decisions on the EMBL indicative scheme, which is quite important for, for EBI and the hub. In January, we would hope that the Scientific Advisory Board would be established, and then we can begin the process of deciding how Elixir nodes would be reviewed and the process of actually establishing Elixir nodes. And sometime in two twelve, two thirteen, then we will draft an international consortium agreement that has to be approved. And in the meantime, the dream is that the commission decides for FP eight, that they will have a call that says, we need, we will provide, we want something, Elixir to provide this infrastructure, and we will provide some core funding, mainly to fund all the spokes and the access to the data. I think that is a good way to think about it, so that the member states fund the nodes and some of the hub, but that the commission could fund the access to the data and the coordination between the different nodes. So I honestly do believe that there are huge benefits to make this working. I can't frankly see an alternative. I don't know how we're going to deal with the data if we don't do something like this. So I think this is really important. I think there are huge advantages that will come about by having this infrastructure. So for some of you who are in the audience, you're probably thinking, gosh, this is awfully complicated, and what on earth can, can I do from where I am seated in terms of being involved a bit in Elixir? So one idea would be that you could submit with your institution or with colleagues from your country, a suggestion for, for a node. That's, you know, that is fundamentally, as scientists, that's what we want you to think about. What is missing from the European infrastructure, what might we be able to provide that is unique in terms of services and infrastructure? So obviously, as a scientist, you could also say, this is a good idea. It's, I know it's complicated and, you know, twenty years ago, I would have run a mile from this because it's, it is so complicated, it is so complicated, thinking about how to do it. But what you realise as you get older, and I'm not sure whether wiser is the right word, but you do realise that you actually need something like this for this data infrastructure to work. You can't, it won't just happen unless somebody really invests the energy, the time and the money that's needed for it. And so really, it's, it's doing anything that you can to encourage your country to be involved in this. I haven't talked about outside of Europe because, as you can see, it's pretty complicated within Europe. However, outside of Europe, it's clear that we need to make links with countries outside Europe. We already have them, say, with the US and, and Japan and, and, but these are going to, these are going to grow and change. And there are big opportunities, I think, for smaller countries to interact with Elixir and to be part of it in the longer term. But that will happen once we've got the thing sort of set up and running. So I hope that I've given you a broad introduction of what, where we are, where we're trying to go. I, I think, I don't, are there any immediate questions now, or should we just carry on with Andrew and Dominic's talk? Any, any immediate questions? There will be a discussion time at the end. Well, I hope I've not completely confused the issue. So, okay. So...